So I welcome all of you to today's session, to all the teachers, seniors and my colleagues. And this is one of the special lecture that we have planned in our addiction psychiatry module, which sir would be taking a brief introduction regarding Dr. Bhaskar Mukazi sir. The sir is actually a psychiatrist who is showing mirror to ourselves and to the most hated psychiatrist in the world. A bit about him is that although he says that he hates psychology and all non-medical humanities, subjects with equal passion and if you are interested in them, then please count yourself in in that category too. But like what we have understood that instead of hating, he tries to actually prove through very other mean that might be the how the brain functions. So whatever is redundant, a very new way by which you can actually understand the basics, the basis of behavioral sciences and also how brain is in the center of all. So sir, without any delay, I open this session and I sir like, the stage is all yours. Let's start with the first topic that you have decided is the evolution of addiction.
Yes, and from evolution of addiction to high progress to a total addiction of today's. So, first, talk about addiction. What is addiction for you? In your MBBS curriculum, you are being told it is a cross, there are three, three things you are being told. Some of you are being told is a chronic relapsing limiting disease of brain, where brain is unable to live without any substances or any, I would say, kids or anything. That is one of the theories that you are getting exposed to, those of you who are lucky enough. Then there is another group of you who are getting exposed to the moral and social idea that addiction is a social evil, addiction occurs due to poverty and various economic and social disadvantages and due to all pervasive early life stage, early life stress that is prevalent in psychiatry since Freud started his Ody pass and his daughter studied Lick's complex, which has no meaning whatsoever. And even there is a third one, the third one, which many of you are getting exposed is addiction is a disease for which incarceration and for which prohibition is the only way to treat. This one goes middle, it also accept the moral stigma, it also accept the disease model and it creates prohibition model. But addiction or what goes in the name of addiction is neither human nor it is new in animal world. Addiction is actually using, in a very broad term, using some substances for attaining a state of altered consciousness, which is pleasurable for the organism. Now, addiction starts from actually ant and various other insects. In ant, they actually have aphids. Aphids are a group of insects which produce a kind of body situation, which is nutritious for ant and give them that transient state of altered consciousness, which is loved by ant. So ant use aphid a kind of domesticated pit. Aphids create their body situation which ants collect and in turn ants give aphid protection as well as nurture. So this is probably one of the insect behavior of addiction. Then come, if you say, no, this is not addiction, this is just cooperative behavior and what you are saying is just to prove addiction is a biological thing, that many of your teacher would say, then there is another example. All of you know that honey is collected by bees. But honey, when they collect honey, they are not actually collecting honey. They are collecting the spores and the situation of flower. This situation of flower is actually mildly toxic and mildly intoxication or honey. So many of the time, the bees actually go into a kind of mild intoxication, are unable to return their nest for one night or two and they spend their night in that flower, losing the sense of time. This is also another kind of addiction, which is shown by bees. And here, no student of psychology, no student of sociology would ever be able to object that it is a cooperative relationship because it is not. The nectar is intoxication for bees and they get intoxicated. There are scientific proofs for it. Then let's go slightly higher. Please, you know dolphins are very, very similar in some of the aspects which human beings. Their brain to body ratio is almost like us and is slightly larger than us. That makes them pretty intelligent in terms of brain to body ratio. Now dolphins have various kind of self-indulgent behavior, which can be called repercussions of behavioral addiction. And if you don't want to call it that because it is exhibited by a animal, which according to your moral and social and spiritual teaching are inferior to human being, then there is another way dolphins enter in altered level of consciousness. They play with pufferfish. Pufferfish secrets tetanus toxin. Tetanus toxin is extremely toxic for humans. But for dolphins, in their nose, they ingest, it is stimulable. And after playing with the pufferfish for some time, many dolphins are observed to actually go above the water level, stay there, wander aimlessly. All are behavioral exhibitions of altered state of consciousness. Unfortunately, here again, followers of psychology, sociology and spirituality have said that dolphins don't have consciousness, so how they can have altered state of consciousness? So let's go to another group of animals who according to us has consciousness. The monkeys, the anthropoides, the chimpanzees and things like it. Monkeys frequently get drunk on ripe and overripe food. It has been seen in nature, in colobus monkeys, it has been seen in lab, in research monkeys and no student of humanities will ever be able to contradict that because that is a typical drunk behavior. Then let's go slightly higher up, not monkeys but chimpanzees. Chimpanzees in various part of Africa, specifically Ghana, Uganda and Congo, they actually cultivate and spray sap of a particular tree, which is very intoxicating for them and they repeatedly go there, get intoxicated on those things and then stay there till their intoxication state is over. And again, no student of humanity so far has been able to prove that chimpanzees don't have consciousness and they don't engage in addictive behavior. Then let's go to our human ancestors, starting from Meandakan to homo, every member of homogenous actually have evidence of using psychoactive substances. The cave paintings show huge amount of psychoactive fungal steroids in them. So if they knew to extract fungal psychoactive steroids, then it is logically assumed that they knew how to use it. Then go, let's go to slightly more younger age. I don't know how many of you know about Gobi Kitepe. Gobi Kitepe is the oldest found human habitation site. Gobi Kitepe is in Turkey, modern day Turkey and there are few more ancient sites around it, but Gobi Kitepe is the most explored one. It is a kind of a memorial temple which is dedicated to a event that was significant in the history of those humans. The event is some meteor crashed into the earth, produced some catastrophe and during that catastrophe, humankind suffered greatly and Gobi Kitepe is a memorial of sort for that kind, that event. Now Gobi Kitepe has large stone jars which has residues of beer. And remember, the people who made Gobi Kitepe were hunter-gatherers, so-called hunter-gatherers. So if hunter-gatherers were making beer, then beer making came much before we started agriculture. Then let's go to more interesting things. More interesting things means, let's go to paleogenetic. About ten million years ago, a group of tree-doiling patli and patli land-doiling hominids had a mutation. The mutation made alcohol dehydrogenate four enzyme gain a functional activity of forty fold and compared to what it was previously. Now that created our ability to eat ripe and overripe food in this group of hominids. Now for people of who study human heritage, they are, for them, it is proof that this mutation has given those hominids a survival edge by making them eat ripe and overripe food, which was actually most nutritious diet they could have found. So from ten million years ago, nature was preparing human being to take alcohol. Then let's go to Savannah, the Medesian, Tepe and other areas. Probably by all paleogenetic findings, our cannabis consumption and consumption of psychoactive mushrooms started from that area. Although in Andes and in various South American sites, we are finding evidence that they also started using various psychoactive substances around thousand or one thousand five hundred pieces. But our evidence from Tepe is much before that. So now there is a competing opinion where it started first. But till now, Tepe is the more logical conclusion, it has more evidence. Anyway, in Tepe, they started using cannabis. Tepe actually is the land between Turkey to Mongolia. And here, they used cannabis, which has very low potency compared to current cannabis strains. The paleogenetics, the branch of paleogenetics, which deal with various plant biology, they have found out that in progressive evolution and successive generation, humankind started interbreeding the cannabis plant and the other psychoactive plants to create more and more potent strains. So again, it is a bidirectional evolution. We evolved, we made our intoxication evolve to have more and more potency. Then there is another thing. This theory is very controversial and has not many take-overs till now. Maybe in future, but till now there is not many take-overs. There is Neckina, who published his book in nineteen thirties, who claimed that consumption of the psychoactive fungi gave humanity the social structure that we actually use now. By using, he postulated that by using various psychoactive fungi, human being started communicating with each other earlier, started social working, started creating the primitive society very fast and that gave rise to society. There is not much evidence to it except unity. There is an evolutionary leap in history of humanity around seven thousand to nine thousand years, which cannot be explained by other means. So nowadays, few people are supporting Neckina, but we are not. Then let's come to our historical age. Historical age means since when we started getting written document of that age. So far, we are worth talking about our history, which we could understand from various archaeological studies, various paleogenetic studies, paleobotanical study and things like it. Now, the first uniform and the first little language that was found in history would be around Mesopotamia and would be around that. There, it is clearly that poppy juice is one of the medicinal substances that is needed for a lot of treatments. Just a minute, I need to take one minute. Sorry, sorry for taking the break. Actually, it's Sunday, so some housework needed to be done. Anyway, the thing is, I was in our first historical data. In Mesopotamia, it has been found that poppy water or poppy extract used to be a very, very common medicinal prescription for all the various ailments. The same thing was found in Egypt. Then if we go to the Chinese civilization, even in Chinese civilization, there was some emperor who were also much a complex species. In some of their records, cannabis and opium used to be prescribed as ventilator, as calming agent, as agents to be given for any brain condition. So that is the ancient other civilization evidences. Now let's come to Indian civilization. Indian civilization is na unique area. Why? Because it sits right in the crossroad between historical opium bill and historical cannabis. Historical opium bill stretches from present-day Iran to Mesopotamia, present-day Iraq Iran to present-day Thailand and Laos. And India almost stays, Indian subcontinent is in the middle of. Then ancient cannabis bill started from Middle Asian epic to the Deccan Peninsula. And you can also see that India stayed right in middle of it. So in India, both cannabis and opium were being used for a long, long time. India also used one type of effinta, but what kind of effinta that is, we don't know. Because we have not been able to replicate that effinta yet. But they mixed all these things in their ritualistic soma or soma. If we talk about the Persian branch of our civilization. Now soma used to be a god's offering. Soma used to be the nectar of the god, the nectar of immortality. It used to be a very potent addictant for all these aspects. And in ancient Aurore, affin or affin is an antidote for a lot of things. Again, including anxiety and other things in their language. So in our all ancient history, we have used drugs like nobody's. And there is evolutionary history that there all other non-human mammals as well as non-mammalian animals have used addicts as a source of altered consciousness, as a source of pleasure. Then come our modern uses and our modern uses exceeds everything. Means, let's talk about modern times, the industrial times. I am skipping the Remesa time and other thing because that was a time of conflicting evidences. One, at one side Jesuit jail, at another side Arabian jail and in between the debiterie of Eastern and Western Europe. So I would not go into the Middle Ages and describe that because that would take a lot of time. And that would actually, that is a good thing to discuss, but that would not come very handy in this evolution. Anyway, to our modern time. When we jump cut to our modern time, it starts around industrial, intercellation and eighteen century. We found that opium, cannabis, alcohol, everything has permeated European society and as European society was the agonizers, through them, it has permeated every world areas. And European society by trading with the new world have picked up cocaine, have picked up ayahuasca, have picked up ibogen, have picked up heart and various other substance, which gives various kind of deservedness. And they were used heavily almost in every household. In poor countries, for one example, mothers used to give affin mixed or proper. uh mothers used to give affin mixed or poppy mixed in water and used to feed that to their one month, two month, three month whole child. And used to go to field for various work and they used to come back and the baby was asleep the whole time, not disturbing anyone. You see, many generation ago, we were actually fed all these things during our first month postnatal life, second month postnatal life. And now we create so much noise out of it. Then came the laudanumera or alcohol, cannabis and opium thing. It used to given to calf, it used to give it to cold, it used to give it to meek child, hungry. It used to be given to everything, anything and everything to calm patient down. Uh and then came the Freudian experiment with cocaine and how he and his friends made cocaine a well celebrated addictant in various European house. And at the same time, all the world were seeing various uses of this addictant. Now, I would take a short video to go back to ancient history and back again. Because I have purposefully not told about one that one uses using warfare. Things and Saint Chinese and Saint Araptan civilization and Saint Schumian civilization and so on. These psychoactive substances used to be moral buster for the people going to war. And same time, nobody used to go to war in their same mind. They used to go yeah intoxicated. Sometimes the intoxication, intoxication by hallucinogens, sometimes they were opium, sometimes they were cannabis, sometimes they were total mixture of all. And as human civilization progressed, alcohol got added to the list. Many a time, specifically in British Navy and European Navy, soldiers used to be given ration and salary in form of alcohol. So, that is one aspect of addictant use that has been neglected and that has never been shown. It has been postulated that the defeat of Puras in the hand of Alexander probably was widespread use of opium in Indian or team Indian army. And actually, at that time, the Macedonian army used to be using other kind of substances which were more stimulant rather than deadly. So individually, Indian soldiers fought well, but together they actually could not make a cohesive force and they actually was defeated. Similar thing is valor of nachpots, valor of various other Indian soldiers. Even it was postulated by various historians that early Islam invaded India because they were abstinent of any kind of addictants. And Indian soldier is to go to fight with opium along with alcohol or without. So, that is one of the reasons. Actually, early Islam own what a war because Islam strategically banned use of psychoactive substances in daily life. Probably, this is not science fact, this part. This is a speculation for which we don't have much proof, but probably this ban of psychoactive substances by Islam was a mentality rather than a spiritual. So that it can win over other populace. Anyway, then in industrial age, the war got more rapidly. In past World War, the Great War, there was rampant use of alcohol, rampant use of various other substances that were found in that. And then came Nazis and the aliens. Nazis own in early phase of war because of their lightning struggle which is known as Blitz. Now, Blitzes occur due to Nazis use of speed. Speed is a combination of caffeine and methamphetamine. By investing speed every day, German soldiers used to have more period of concentration, more period of war before tearing and they could walk and they could fight for eighteen or twenty hours. That made the huge difference. Yes, due to this rampant use of various substances, German soldiers were degenerating into various kind of addicts and various kinds of psychiatric patient. And that is probably one of the reasons. The genocide in Germany went into so high because by habitual use of these stimulants, they have lost various finer aspects of their cognitive and emotional abilities. When Allies started winning over Germany, it was into three reasons. Second war, first, Germany attacked Soviet Russia. Number two, Soviet Russia used vodka. And number three, Allies used mate amphetamine and cocaine. So, they got a power to more power history. It is probably more due to drugs than due to Hitler's failure to understand the war that led to defeat of Germany. So, you see, our whole history is a chronicle of how we used various substances to gain evolutionary advantage, to gain visionary advantage, to gain civilization advantage, to do a lot of things, including using medicine, use in burial practices and things like that. Then in nineteen sixty, America for the hippie movement and American people again went into the era of banning. The first ban was alcohol ban, which gave rise to Mario Kuzo, Kuzo's Godfather, the excellent book and which gave rise to more drug deaths than ever happened in America. The temporary movement, but America is not famous to learn from history. We are also not famous anyway. So, Americans again went into the war against drug. And by pressing United Nations, by creating economical and political desire over every other allied nation. America created this various drug resisting law, drug civilization law and created a situation where we are now treating addiction instead of saying it is a human behavior that was there since dawn of humanity and it is a universal animal behavior. So, when you start addiction and you treat addiction, you first have to understand that the addiction are not really the unnatural one, you are the unnatural one. You, every addiction psychiatrist, what their soil. Again, this what their soil has a relationship with addiction. If you, if anyone want to follow this phrase and its etymology, you would come up with a fascinating story of addiction and warfare. Anyway, if any addiction psychiatrist, what their soil doesn't know that they are the unnatural one, then their journey of addiction psychiatry has not been begun. So, we are actually combating normal human tendencies. And from here, the struggle starts. Are we against addiction? Are we against use of recreational use of substances? Or are we against the human tendency to explore, to seek novelty, to escape from reality and to enjoy periods of altered consciousness? If we are fighting against any of these three, then our, our journey is doomed from the start. We can never stop addiction. And that gives rise to another important question, what is behavioral addiction? I would come to that too. So, we whether are addiction psychiatrists, whether are psychiatrists interested in brain lightning and whether are normal general psychiatrists. We have to understand we are neither fighting addiction. We are neither fighting the human tendency to have addiction. We are neither fighting the animal tendency to have some escape route from various altered state of consciousness. If we ever try, try to go into fighting them, we are going to lose the battle. So, what we are fighting? We are not fighting addiction. We are fighting a something else. Addiction is not a disease, we have proved it. Addiction is not anything criminal, we have proved it. So, why we, we are start treating addiction? Why we are trying to act as social enforcers? We must have a moral and ethical stand beside us to do that as well as a scientific reality. The scientific reality is altered consciousness for some time is not bad. The recreational use is not bad. Addictants themselves is not bad, they are, they are because we have created it over our evolution. We are trying to fight a spectrum of compulsive impulsive behavior which when goes into wrong area destroys the human being as well as their associated family. But again, there is an important difference. The same threat, the same compulsive impulsive behavior is the reason of every human development in this civilization. When we do one thing in expression of everything else in our life, we become fanatics. And fanatics, when they go into substances, they become a problem. Fanatics, when they go into warfare, they become reparative. Fanatics, when they go into terrorism, they become mass murderers. Fanatics, when they go into science, they become acclaimed scientists. Fanatics who go into exploring become explorers who died given their life, taken inhuman torture to do some discovery. Scott, Amun Sen, David Livingstone, thousands of people. MacGillan, even the one I've forgotten name who ruled world is round is also one of the uh fanatics because he died to be dead. Anyway, so everyone who is a fanatic is a potential target but potential changer of human history. And we are here to channelize that and if we fail to channel it, they control it. We need to stop those fanatics who are going into harmful use of that fanaticism and we need to nurture those fanatics who are going into productive use of that fanaticism. If we understand that, then we are starting our journey of addiction. Now, you would say how? That is the big question. You need to understand which to treat, which not to treat, where to intervene, where not to intervene and where to say that I give up, you continue your journey and at the end of your journey, you might fail and die miserably or you might give one something. I would give few examples, you would understand them. Let's talk about Henry Cavendish. Henry Cavendish was one of the chemist who changed the world of history. He discovered a lot of early chemicals. He was a legend in his contemporary scientific company, but he was also a very bad fanatic. He was an autistic person. If autism would have been diagnosed at that time. He used to live alone, he used to shy away from people's contact. He used to be alone, but his only companions were two band servants who were there to look after him. Whenever he used to come out of his hibernation, he used to roam at night so that no people can identify him and check it. That was Henry Cavendish. And if you treat And if you treat Henry Cavendish, you might have lost the chemical relationship. Now comes another one. I would not give the name. It is job of you to identify. This is a female. When she went into her doctorate, she fell in love with her teacher who was many years senior to her. Then she married her teacher in spite of social objection and a lot of scandal. That is the fast expression of her fanaticism. Then she fanatically went and worked in dangerous areas and together with her teacher, mentor and husband. She created a name for herself in chemistry of that time and finally won a joint Nobel Prize. Then her husband died. She went into a stormy affair with another scientist. Again, disregarding all social and moral objections. And subsequently, she went into more dangerous work. And ultimately received a second Nobel Prize and died of heart, heart attack. Even today, our remains cannot be touched because the remain is so dangerous for humans that they are sedated. And this is my life of a fanatic. If you read Life of Merrick Currie, he wa, she was a behavioral addict from her early childhood. Could we treat her? In today's world, she would also have mobile addiction. She would also have a lot of other non-substance that is behavioral addiction. Could we treat her or not? This is where the question lies. And that day, DSM fully identified behavioral addiction. DSM opened this dangerous box. I wanted to go to behavioral addiction through example so that we understand how dangerous behavioral addiction is. We are now chilling waters, but we have no idea. We have no idea at all what we. Then came. Do you know the name of the originator of Bitcoin? Anyone, if you can re, uh search internet, you find. That person is someone who goes by a pseudonym. Nobody knows him. Nobody actually have met him. He is sitting on a freezer that is of innumerable value. But he doesn't spend it. He doesn't actually do anything about it and live a life about which nobody knows. Another example of an extremely paranoid fanatic. He is showing behavioral addiction in his every step along with extreme power. So in today's world, we go to find there are behavioral addicts amongst us. They are productive, so we are not treating them. And that thirteen year old child who is just discovered, who has just discovered the mobile games, who has just discovered there is a uh battle drive games. There are massively multiplayer online games and whose parent doesn't know about it becomes a victim of our poli anger and we treat that thirteen year old. We don't treat these people. We don't treat, would you ever treat me? I am a behavioral addict, take note of that. I pursue knowledge above everything, sacrificing everything. Without intellectual challenge, I cannot survive. I, I just have the insight to know that yes, I have behavioral addiction. But again, I would say what is inside? Inside is nothing but the person knowing there is some problem. And the idea of insight is a psychological process. Because every person we see in outdoor has insight. They know something is wrong with them. They are just not ready to share it with other people sometimes and they are scared to share it with other people sometimes. And we label them from various grades of it. That is another example of our secrets, but I am not going into that. So the thing is behavioral addiction is something. When we start labeling that, we would go into various kind of trouble. And we have opened the floodgates of trouble. In future, in a decade or two, psychiatric community would apologize to world for making behavioral addiction a critical thing. But by then, a lot of harm would have been done. So soon we treat them. Yes, we treat the extreme cases. Extreme means, I would give one example of my one patient. She had been so engrossed in games that she started playing twenty four into seven. She stopped kicking, she stopped licking. She had two attacks for which she had to admit, to be admitted in ICU and it was found that she was suffering from extreme dehydration and extreme malnutrition. These are the people who definitely near our home. These are the people for whom every kind of addiction treatment is just done. But for a thirteen year old child with attention deficiency who has just discovered mobile gaming and internet, we first have to educate the patient and teach the patients the mobile behavior rather than teaching them how to play ski, treating them and making their lives miserable. And definitely, we should stop using mobile addiction, addiction to smartphone, addiction to internet, addiction to internet game because that doesn't make any sense. Internet game is now a professional sport. If you turn a athletic, a sports athlete, the athletic federation would sue. And the day is not far when the digital gaming community is going to sue us. So we should be sensible. We should understand why we need to intervene and why we not intervene. I know I have broken down almost everything you have been told about addiction. That is what I wanted. I wanted you to think. I wanted you to know and I wanted you to counter the brainwashing that you have been handled down from your teachers and their teachers. Addiction is not the problem. Drugs are not the problem. Behavior is not the problem. The problem is there is a person who has no break in brain. That person need a break in brain, but that breaks would only be offered if the person is destroying their life and being non-productive. If we start providing break to everyone who, who have this fanatic nature and is doing something good for civilization and society, then we are going to restrict our evolution. This is a double-edged sword and we need to learn to live with it. And first of all, everyone who has to understand addiction psychiatry, who wants to do addiction psychiatry and who think addiction psychiatry is exciting has to stop their fear of addiction and should try every kind of addiction at least once or twice. Otherwise, they would be a alien amongst humanity. This ends my lecture. Now let's start the question answer.
Uh, so thank you, sir. Uh, thank you for the session and I request everyone to uh write the question in the chat. Sir, meanwhile, we have received multiple question and based on that, I am going to ask you one by one. Okay, sir, I have compiled it. Uh, sir, the first question is that what is the percentage of genetics? Percentage of psychology, percentage of sociology in addiction?
Problem is sociology and psychology. What you mean by psychology? That is the first question I would ask. What is you meant by sociology? That is again I would ask because I have never understood these things. Let's say, a person is born in the womb. They would have.
Uh, sir, um, sorry to stop you, sir. There is a background noise coming out.
Yes, okay. Now.
Continue, sir, so please continue.
So our child is born or rather a child is getting formed in maternal uterus. At that moment, the child genetic development, child's brain development would be dictated by fetal and maternal interaction. This fetal and maternal interaction has very limited exposure to any environmental thing. So at that moment of life, the vulnerability, that is the genetic vulnerability for everything would come as genetic. Then the person is born, which fully form, just mean, just mean, which is fully formed, is exposed to various kinds of environmental. Now, that environmental cue to or would not impact that developing child depending on ease or hard genetic traits. When it impacts, it would be called epigenetic. When it doesn't impact, it will just slip up. Then the person would go in adolescence and adulthood collecting some epigenetic mark. Epigenetic marks are not so easy to create. And like the way psychiatrists think, uh genetic is not, gene is not, whatever happens in environment, leave a genetic imprint, it's not like that. Epigenetics is controlled by genetics. And when the genetic mechanism allow the environment to enter, the environment enters. And environment doesn't specify its place. The environment, gene environment interaction would not say, I come from childhood sexualities. Uh, gene environment interaction would not say, I come from poverty. The gene environment interaction would not say, I come from this trauma or this. The gene environment interaction would never specify what created that gene environment interaction. It would just be important how long that gene environment interaction was testing. Now, so after a certain time in late adolescence, the genetic triggers start manifesting. And if they have accumulated enough epigenetic mark, then the epigenetic mark would also start manifesting along with genetic traits and it could actually be the start of the external flow. Now, there would be a question whether we would be able to see the marks before that? Yes, we would be able to see. It would come as attention deficit trait, it would come as obsessive trait. Attention deficit trait means vulnerability towards stimuli. Obsessive trait means vulnerability towards various cerebral depressions like alcohol, anxiety, pain, opium and clean. So these are the things that would happen. I don't know which you would call psychology, which you would call sociology because there is no psychology, sociology in these things. It's all, this is all biology and gene environment, organism environment interaction.
Uh, okay, sir. Uh, so the second is genetics and diagnosis of addiction. This was the kind of comment like what would you speak on this? Like what is the role of genetics and diagnosis of addiction?
Thing is diagnosis of addiction is clinical. Because I have at least clarified it by now, addiction is not a disease. Addiction is just a thing. So the disease is the psychiatric symptoms that we treat. So every psychiatric abnormality gene is a gene for addiction. So if a gene gives vulnerability for, let's say neuronal dysmigration, then that gene is a addiction vulnerability. If a gene gets vulnerability to excessive synaptic training, then that gene is also a kind of addiction vulnerability. Any gene that has a role in deviation of neurodevelopment from the normal range of trajectory is a gene for which is responsible for behavior known as addiction.
Okay, sir.
The issue is, do you have, do we have enough gene database to say this patient has this is gene and so is vulnerable to this, this uh addiction? No, we don't have that much genetic data yet because we have twenty thousand gene. And if you combine it and combine twenty thousand gene, you come up with a trillion number, some trillion number. Now we don't have that some trillion number of gene. We have three thousand.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, continuing with the etiology part, one student has asked regarding Robin and Goose criteria, which was used, uh, how is it relevant in the current scenario of addiction medicine?
Not much relevant.
Okay, sir.
But please do not accept this. Once you pass your, pass your M D, understand they have no meaning. But still you are not out of your M D for you, it is very, very simple.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, role of law in making diagnosis of addiction, why it was dropped from DSM? Okay sir, uh sir, role of law in making diagnosis of addiction, why it was dropped from D S M?
Uh law of making law means?
Sir, like the various kind of restriction laws which were there, initially the laws used to be there. As a part by which you help to make the diagnosis, why it has been dropped? That was the question asked sir.
Because the thing is, D S M people have started understanding it is a spectrum. Problem is, they have not understood enough, so they are creating spectrum of their make-believe diagnosis. D S M is a make-believe. D S M has no biological validity. D S M has no scientific validity. This is a make-believe sort of collection of names. Now, at this moment, the people who form D S M have understood enough. That these things do not actually stay singularly, there is no silo, they'll intercommunicate. But they are not ready to completely resolve D S M. Because they don't know what they will do. That is why they created the spectrum concept and that is why they dropped this type of laws. But ultimately, that is far from what is required.
Okay sir, uh sir demarcation of addictive behavior and addiction as a disorder.
Addiction is not a disease, addiction is just a symptom. Addictive behavior is a trait, genetic trait that you are born with and that you are going to die with. Nobody can cure your addictive behavior. We can only restrict addictive behavior and put. Generalize it into something if we are lucky enough and addiction can be changed. Can be the done away with a lot of things. Let's say you are an alcoholic. I can make you a fanatic and I can make you a A member. And you are going to show your fanaticism in converting all people into A members. That happens frequently. Similarly, that is how any operation. They change the narcotic addiction to behavioral addiction of power. Manipulation and actually respect in any organization. So, that is how changing one addiction from another addiction happen. If you say someone has been sober, someone has quit addiction. Then just look towards the person and observe for her. You would find out there is excess in some behavior or the other. It never goes, that we chat of addiction.
Okay sir, uh sir, uh like the etiology part we have done sir, now coming to the neurobiology and that part. Role of neuromodulation in addiction medicine as whole brain is involved, what are we going to achieve with T M S treatment?
Whole brain is involved in everything. There is not a single brain behavior. That is not whole brain mediated. Let's say neurocognitive disorders. Neurodeficit, post-C V A state, multiple sclerosis, all are whole brain disorder. But when we see, then we will see brain as an electrical grid. With then, in some maladaptive behavior. Some grid is working, some part of the grid is working more, some part of the working grid is working less. The goal of so-called neuromodulation is to. Make the hyperactive part of the grid normal and the hypoactive part of grid normal. Problem is, if for that to succeed. You have to give continuous stimulation in the T M S or R T M S group. Or if you are using ultrasound, then ultrasound group. If you are using infrared and optogenetics. Then that group and this temporary T M S treatment, temporary R T M S treatment. If you are giving it, you are giving temporary relief. Some patient would say, yes, I have improved, but that permanent lasting improvement if ever happens. Happens due to spontaneous remission of that symptom. Symptoms changes the vulnerability, the symptom would in future coming some other. So, for addiction, there are some important areas where we use temporarily. Temporarily stimulated means, there is one area in cerebellum. Cerebellum is the brake for all kind of brain output. Brain doesn't understand that you have read psychology and you have understood cognitive. Uh emotional and things like that. For brain output is one. So cognition output, emotional output, motor output, all use. One single final common part because brain work in efficient energy efficiency. So, cerebellum is controller of motor activity, controller of emotional activity. Controller of cognitive activity. So by stimulating cerebellum. We can actually let the person have more control over impulsive matches. Then there is orbitofrontal cortex, lateral prefrontal cortex and area light. There, by stimulating them, we can give the value judgment system. Some change, but again, remember this is temporary, cerebellar stimulation is temporary. Now, whatever genetic, whatever uh. The electrical data we submit at this stage for T M S or R T M S. There is no long-term change with T M S or R T M S. It is impossible, biologically impossible. If biological science doesn't approve something, if biological science says. That our intervention can only work if it is present. Then we have to accept it. Even drugs, the more powerful neuromodulator, they also work temporarily. As long as the drug is present in body, in the changes would stay. You omit the drug, within three weeks to six months, the disease would come back. In some other form, but you would also.
Okay sir, uh thank you sir, uh sir, after this, uh in the same segment, sir, this is my question sir, uh as of now. What is the status of the model that was given by Coop? Does it still hold true or we need some modification in that?
We need a lot of modification. Coop started on the adenosine and that is a disease. Problem is it is not a disease. So, we have to come up with something else. What would be that something? We have to think about, let's say, it is. A manifestation of disease, it is a symptom of disease, it is a symptom of panvariability of brain. And things like that and reconfiguration needs to be done to the model of Coop. There are a lot of reconfiguration attempt going on throughout the world. None has succeeded so far. So, again, till you pass your. M D, Coop is the god. Then, after you pass your M D, start questioning your god.
Okay sir, uh sir, uh like how to go for utilization of neurobiology clinics, I think you have already answered this. Uh sir, uh does the current set of treatment modality address the problem of addiction? If yes, uh can you summarize the guideline? If no, where are we lacking? I think this is also.
We have to summarize guideline in just one word. So, divide it while you are post-M D, keep them as your bible. While you are M D, but give no actually importance to them. In whatever state you are. The road learning is the only thing that guideline could offer and nothing fruitful would ever come from guideline. Addiction treatment means, remember in everything else. The same treatment as in addiction. Or electrical grid of brain. Brain has actually three forms of pathological formulation. One set of pathological formulation is genetic. Genetic pathological formulation is very, very vast and I am not touching it because. If someday I am going to talk about genetic formulation of brain disorder. That would take us two to three days physically because that is impossible to show. In this sterile way near environment. So, that is for some other. So molecular genetic diagnosis, I am not going. But then then has a molecular synaptic diagnosis. Molecular synaptic diagnosis is various cellular thing that is happening. That affects the intercellular as well as cell-to-cell connection. And that ultimately impacts the various networks. That is the second set of pathology and all we know so far. In molecular neuroscience, actually is geared towards this molecular pathological diagnosis. Let's say, someone has addiction. So, if that someone has addiction, then there is a potential for excitotoxicity. In that person's brain and that person's brain has less. Excitatory input in some areas and more excitatory input in other areas. So, how does that happen? Means in one area, the growth signaling and the neuroimmune signaling is happening less. Another area is happening, both are happening more. So, we need to suppress both signaling altogether with partially stimulate. The growth signal altogether, so that there would be a balance. Growth and immune signal. So, that would create a stable electrical grid. That is the formulation of molecular connectomic formulation. This is the early stage of molecular connectomic formulation and the most. Understood formulation is connectomic formulation. Connectomic formulation means. Where we understood so far that brain, every area of brain is actually either a three-layer. Or four-layer or six-layer microcircuit. And these microcircuits connect with each other electrically whenever the need arises. And various electrical circuits work in various ways, but all of them are functioning. There are some physical electrical circuits, but they are limited and they are fixed in their matrix. One of the fixed electrical circuits is, for example, from ventromedial prefrontal cortex to amygdala. Dorsal forebrain bundle. This is a fixed electrical circuit because it has a physical presence. Similarly, cortical spinal tract is a fixed, fixed electrical circuit because it has a physical presence. But most of the electrical circuit of brain is a dynamic electrical circuit. And depending on the work we do, this dynamic electrical circuit change. And they are straight, they are impedance and their way of communication. Determines what motor, cognitive, emotional input. We would give in a particular situation depending on the other two unknown. Genes that we talked. So, in case of this addiction. We can understand this connectomic formulation by a simple car model. This car model is also applicable for all other extension of addictive behavior. Delusion is a behavioral addiction, if you see from the layers of addiction. Delusion is actually a behavioral addiction. Yes, you are getting astonished because nobody told you that. We can see delusion as a behavioral addiction, but it is. The same principle applies. In hallucination is one of the extreme example of behavioral addiction. Then aggression is a behavioral addiction. Then various impulsive self-injurious behavior is a. Addictive behavior. So if I, we can configure every psychiatric symptom. Into a addictive model. Now, let's explain addictive model from a car point of view. Brain is a car. Brain has a driver in terms of executive circuits. Brain is a car which has a engine in terms of divert circuit. And the limbic cortex. Brain has a brake. In terms of cerebellar and cerebral connection, cerebro- cerebral connection. And brain has a brake which is, sorry, brain has a accelerator. Which is kind of salience that are called C S T syndrome. You can also create a chassis for brain which is D M L. But I am not going to chess because that would be more complicated. So, just remember the simple car model. So, whenever brain is working something excessively, you can. Understood that in terms of the car is running too fast. So, what you can do? You can increase the driver's ability to stop the car. You can increase the brakes' ability to stop the car. You can dampen the engine to stop the car. So, engine dampening is done by anticycotic, engine dampening is done by antipyretic. Engine dampening is done by natrizone, engine dampening is done by anticanabulin. Then the brake strengthening, brake strengthening can be done by cerebellar P T S. Brake strengthening can be done by various drugs which increases cerebellum's function. For example, indoxifen, damoxifen, they are kinase inhibitors. And the kinases they inhibit are mostly present in cerebellum. So, by inhibiting those kinases, they are actually disinhibiting the cerebellar flow. And ultimately, long term, they would increase the cerebellar function. So, in a way, they increase the cerebellar function, but they will be same length. Then the enhancement of driver, all antidepressants will do that. All stimulant will do that and things like that. Then the accelerator. Accelerator modulation is going to be done by antidepressant. It accelerator modulation would be done by. It accelerator modulation would be done by various forms of. Trans which causes dissociation, which causes hallucination. Because they actually stop the switch. So hallucination occurs. And all of these are used for addicts and suicide, either in combination or if you are lucky enough. Enough single model.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, like.
Uh, just Monique.
Yes, sir. In the meantime, if you have any doubt or any query that you want to ask, please do put that in the chat section so that we can take it. Prakar, your question, I'll just put it in a matter of time when we club all the behavioral addiction question. Yes, sir.
Hmm. So, any more questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sir, there are few academic question also like how to read addiction in P G, how to read addiction? In S R ship and is there any necessary to do D M addiction or is it sufficient to go with the usual psychiatry?
D M addiction is a little psychology in this country, in all over the world. If you are interested in psychology, please do it. If you are not interested in psychology, then you can forget it.
Okay, sir.
In D M addiction, you would learn the psychological view, how to stop all addiction. How to never indulge in addiction, how to be a tito teller, how to do motivational enhancement. How to do various kind of psychotherapy which would make addict listen to you. And which would make every addict hate it. So, please go there. If you feel that you are competent in psychology and not biology, but otherwise, never bother. At this moment of time, addiction psychiatry is full of addiction psychiatry. Maybe in future it will be worth to not help.
And sir, the answer to the first two question, uh, to read post P G, like what are the materials to go for post P G? Sir, we have few S Rs in the, uh, in our course, around, around twenty-two S Rs are there. So they asked this question regarding. What are the materials specifically they'll be looking for post P G?
Post P G, buy actually a subscription of Chat G P T. Or if you, uh, go to want to spend on, let's do in a subscription of Grok. Grok is actually giving, uh, one year subscription at seven thousand five hundred. And also, if you are not. Want to spend only on A I, then buy Google One A I plan. Here you would get, uh, Gemini A I fully functional, along with that you would get the. Uh, what would be Google Drive and various other things. You can choose any of these three depending on what you want to waste or rather increase. Then start asking these. Chatbots about addiction with few predefined criteria. Ask, tell them that imagine yourself as a neuroscientist. Who is both prophesied in evolutionary neuroscience, molecular neuroscience. Computational neuroscience and also clinical news. And you have an experience of thirty years. Then tell the second comment. That you have to explain everything in biomedical language. With enough logical and scientific grounding and you have to create. Our scientific data for every claim you make. And the third one is, you have to be factual, you have to do double and triple G for every. Logical assumption you are making. With these three, uh, criteria in place. Start asking it, how is addiction, what is addiction, evolutionary basis of it. The all the various ways it can be configured. And it can be seen. Talk it about controversy of addiction as a disease. Talk to it about controversy of addiction as a single thing. Talk it about the controversy of dual diagnoses and other things. Just one minute. So, these are the things that by discussing with them. You would find out that is the best way to learn in this age. I can give you a list of books, but the book would be. Ten to fifteen years behind the science and I would say take. Subscription because without subscription model, the free model would not give you much benefit.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, uh, there are two questions regarding cannabis, how to treat cannabis use disorder and one is. Uh, like one, sir, he's a first year, uh, G R, uh, like he says that cannabis induced psychosis or psychosis precipitated. With cannabis. Uh, he has a confusion with the kind of names that are being used. So, uh, so like what's your take on this?
Then one is the first one, sir. No, nothing in this world. Can create a genetic disease unless it is inside you. So, the genetic vulnerability is already there. By using the drug at a particular moment, the genetic vulnerability comes up. Uh, many a time, the genetic vulnerability doesn't come out in first use, second use, third use. But at the subsequent use, many times the genetic vulnerability comes in first use. So, it is really hard to predict who would develop that trigger. But the general assumption is one to three in every thousand. So, this is what general assumption is so far. I am saying general assumption because we have very little data. Psychiatry boasts of academic evidence with medicine, but it's evidence with is few thousand. And so it is more like convenience. Until and unless we get more data, I would say one to three in one thousand. Get trigger of psychosis. So, it is cannabis triggered psychosis and then cannabis induced psychosis. But once the psychosis has been there, it has been going on. Then use of cannabis, use of stimulant, use of everything. Has a chance of recurring trigger. So at that moment, it become associated.
Okay, sir. Uh, and the first question which we asked like how to go for the treatment of cannabis use disorder. And sir, there is one more question, stimulant use disorder. Would you like to give a brief account for both of them? Cannabis use disorder and stimulant?
Use disorder means you have to give, we have to just, you have to first assess. Is it a attention deficit primary state degenerating into slowly obsessive state? And discovered cannabis and now using cannabis to calm himself or hustle down. Or is it a primary obsessive state with secondary attention deficit state? Primary and secondary means which state is more important. And whether it is a primary obsessive state with secondary attention deficit state. Finding cannabis and feeling more relaxed and happy with it. Depending on that, your treatment will fail. If the attention deficit progresses more, then you have to start. Anxiety treatment followed by attention deficit treatment. If the anxiety treatment. If the attention deficit is not that high, then start quick anti-anxiety treatment followed by anti-impulsive. And for all the stimulant use disorder. Stimulant use disorder also has a wastey kind of treatment. We never use that. Why you don't use that idea? If we can use opioid supplementation therapy and why not stimulant supplementation therapy? That beats my very little understanding in brain. I don't understand why a cocaine addict is not given adequate dose of methylphenidate. And at the same time of using it. In my clinical practice, I use. First, the autonomic dampener followed by instant release methylphenidate. At time, at the time of cocaine. And they need huge amount of methylphenidate. That amount of methylphenidate is not going to kill them because cocaine is many time potent than methylphenidate. If cocaine is not killing them, it's not inducing scissoring rate, then methylphenidate is not going to do that. Half a day with help me a trial and then say, you can't find it doesn't do anything. Neither do justice to patient, neither do anything to patient. Then you would also need anti-impulsive treatment. And they would also need treatment for sleep because all the people who have. Stimulant addiction are hugely attention deficit impaired. They have huge sleep loss.
Okay, sir. Like the take home point is to look into the traits, the primary and the secondary one, adequately deal with them. Then the result will be, uh, as per the substance which they are taking. Okay, sir. Uh, so two more question in the treatment, then we'll go for the next segment, sir. So the opioid management without opioids, like. Uh, sir, this was asked that is it possible to go for the management of people with opioid dependence syndrome without using any opioid? And subsequently, sir, I'll, I'll take one more, sir, use of naltrexone in addiction, sir, like we can go with this.
Uh, Mani, the password one I have actually answered.
Yes, sir.
You can just post.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll do it, sir. So the use of naltrexone in addiction means pan-addiction, sir, the use of naltrexone.
Naltrexone is a, one of the best anti-impulsive and anti-compulsive. So, you are not using it for reducing the opioid. You are using their it for reducing the impulsive driving tech, impulsive paving. And along with that, making the person less compulsively reading. And the naltrexone dose is not fifty. You have to understand naltrexone's absorption is erratic. Naltrexone absorption is personal. If you routinely measure. When naltrexone bloodless, then you'd find that same fifty mg dose would provide. Different kind of blood level in different way. So if, uh, I would say do not go for blood test, it would be costly. Just see the clinical response. Fifty, do not expect anything. Uh, go to fifty, then go to hundred. Stop, that is the fast pit stop where there, if it doesn't cause much thing or higher. In medical history, there is sixteen thousand, sorry, sixteen hundred empty. Naltrexone overdose and there did nothing. They just made the patient abstain, abstinent for almost one month. So that is actually beneficial. Naltrexone overdose is also beneficial. That tendency of associating, associating naltrexone liver damage is more of a hype. Because of the associated alcohol use. There has not been a real. Unbiased study in history so far. Maybe you will get that someday, but at this moment, there is no real unbiased.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, how to go for management of personality disorder with respect to addiction? You have already answered this. Uh, sir, next we'll come to the behavioral section part, sir. There are a few question. Uh, where would you place behavioral addiction in correct scenario?
Let's see.
Okay, sir.
Behavioral addiction is a thing that is mind are. Uh, very bad, mind are very good. We don't even know where to put it. I would say, stay very carefully and be prepared to, uh, get apologized next few details. Just like homosexuality.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, uh, first year resident has asked regarding E I addiction. Is there something that is called as E I addiction?
You have a tendency to overuse everything, then you would also be overusing E I. At present, I am using E I for six to eight hours a day, so I can be a E I addict. But the caveat is, people are using E I now for learning it, for understanding E I. So, you can tell, tell the E I addiction, you can get a kick out of it. But then you would have naming addiction. You name, you would want to name anything as addiction.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, Dr. Uncle Singer, sir has asked regarding is love or behavioral addiction?
Yes, kind of, uh, it is a universal reaction, universal animal reaction. But it can become a behavioral addiction in brain of addicts. So, love is a social attachment. It keeps pleasure. And every pleasurable behavior in the hand of genetics becomes a dangerous addiction. So love is not an exception. So love is ideally said a pleasurable. Social behavior which is rewarding and which has potential to become a behavioral addiction. In a brain of.
Okay, sir. Uh, sir, Prakhar has asked, sir, is homosexuality also a behavioral addiction then?
Homosexuality is a genetically determined sexual behavior. Now, when there is genetically determined sexual behavior, we cannot say it is behavioral addiction. But if a person goes into homosexuality every day and, uh, doesn't do anything except sex. Then that is an addiction, but by nature homosexuality is not a.
Uh, sir, uh, Pranjal Tripathi has asked how to assess insight of a behavioral addict?
Question is, there is no insight. The concept of insight is psychological. Brain doesn't understand insight. Brain understands it is ill or it is suffering from discomfort. Or it is suffering from some problem. Whether brain is ready to accept that in front of. Other brains. That depends on the particular brain's trait. And calling that expression of whether I am vulnerable or not. Insight is a very bad thinking. If the brain is threatened by other brain, the brain would never admit. So, we should not invite insight in any kind of. Brain behavior because insight is a outdated psychological concept, but. As long as you are a M D student, insight is your goal. Once you go out of M D. Throw it out of your brain. It is a worthless concept.
Okay, uh, sir, uh, Dr. Uncle Singer, sir has asked, can naltrexone help in love obsession?
Yes, if a addict goes into love. Yes, if a addict goes into love, then the addictive personality would come up as love and then giving that addict naltrexone would help. But if a person uh who is in love with their life partner in game giving a naltrexone, would just dampen the sexual behavior.
Sir, one question that was asked from uh uh from a S R was uh addiction in Gen Z, is there any different approach we need to take?
Gen Z.
Gen Z population sir, the upcoming population. Sir, uh basically it was related to the child addiction uh kind of thing, so he asked this question.
Uh, Gen Z is human, so human brain is, uh every human brain uh is same. Whether you call you call it Gen Z, Gen Alpha, uh that's homoirres, homoirres hardly matters. Addiction is not a disease, it is a expression of fanaticism in brain.
Okay sir, so the last question from my side will be like how to treat behavioral addiction, I think I've already discussed this. So like I had a total of fifty-two, but I have clubbed it and would have made it into twenty-four. So I have asked twenty-four questions and few questions we have taken from uh the
Audience.
From the chat sir, is there any further question that you have to ask, like we'll wrap it up already more than two hours. So like is there anything further that anyone wants to ask, sir is here? Uh, I think sir, uh I said like uh like we started and with the evolution you discussed regarding prehistoric, the era and the what were there, there in mentioned in the text, what uh evidence was there and then gradually you move to the ancient history to the middle history and the recent one and then we went into the genetic part of addiction. We looked into how the traits play and how it manifests as addictive, what we call it as addictive disorder and labeled as behavioral addiction. And the crux is that we need to look into the traits, as you have said, trait, the primary and the secondary trait, address them. As a result of which we'll be able to see that the desired behavior that we want to reduce will go down, but we don't need to treat it in all population unless and until we are able to make a demarcation from what we need to treat and what we don't need to treat.
Hmm.
Okay sir.
That is where the biggest problem lies, whom to treat and whom not to treat. Because we, if we start feeding healthy addict, then humanity will die.
Okay, uh so thank you sir for answering all the queries that we had received and definitely sir, uh like the addiction psychiatry module has reached its last stage. We have only two lecture that is remaining, but uh at this point of time I received quite a good number of questions uh and was happy that they were all eager to answer and it's not about the number of people who attended, at one point of time seventy, seventy-four people were there and then later on, even on the late Sunday afternoon that we are left with only twenty, but uh the people, all, all, like all of those who attended, I really appreciate your patience and your attention span also. Thank you for attending, uh sir, Dr. Purvash has said, this was such a wonderful session, thank you Bhaskar sir for giving us so many questions to think about even after this, it just gives such a different perspective to how we look at addiction.
Because addiction has been kicked around throughout the years. America's fight against addiction is not actually against addiction, America's fight is to control that drug. And people don't understand it.
Yes sir, uh sir, with that note sir, uh thank you, thank you for um being available and also for attending, uh like all of you, all the audience, everyone those who attended right from beginning till end. Uh a big thank you to all and with this note sir, uh I would like to end the session. Sir, again from all the psychiatry team, we would like to give you a big thank and I hope sir in future also whenever we want to discuss uh uh sir, like the the real psychiatry, I would like to say, we would be definitely uh be looking up to you. Okay sir, Assad has given a remark that thank you so much for organizing this, so the credit goes to sir, the knowledge and the part how sir explains, uh sir has been trying to explain the whole thing, if you look into the lecture really piece by piece. So whatever query was there, I would definitely provide with the session, don't worry. All those who have missed and all those who have missed the segments so that you can go over it again and again. Okay sir, uh thank you all sir, any, any, any concluding remarks that you want to address to sir, like to everyone?
I would say do not take anything in psychiatry just because your teachers, your seniors or someone you respect said it, judge it. In psychiatry, agriom is the rule, do not take anything as a rule, cross it, understand whether it should be followed or not, taste it in scientific understanding. Then if it fits, take it, otherwise reject it.
Okay sir.
Bye bye.
Uh and thank you all for attending the session, now we are closing. So uh we are done with the session, thank you all for attending.